Agenda item number one, in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the June 17th, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam and you do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date. www.lakecam.tv backslash is anyone else recording this meeting from us? I guess not. Alright, so I am Leah Fabian, Chairman of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Allow me to confirm that all members, staff and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So, Richard LaCamera, Selectmen.
I'm here.
Welcome to Brian Day, newest Selectman.
I am here.
How does that sound, huh?
That's strangely heard for the first time, thank you.
Maureen Candido, Town Administrator.
Yeah.
Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Assistant to the Selectmen and Town Administrator.
Yeah.
And follow, we also have with us Ashley Lopes, who is the Financial Director for the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. Can you hear us, Ashley?
I'm here, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Okay. This open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature just chat, so if anyone watching live on Facebook would like to send us a chat, they may do so. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Let's see. Some rules as we go along. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please also remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Alright, so, agenda item number two, vote to reorganize the Board of Selectmen. So, after each annual election, the Board of Selectmen reorganizes. So, Chairman.
I can't make a motion for myself, so.
Okay. Do you want to be Chair, Rich?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, you do? Alright. I do too, but, but that means if you're the Chair, you get to do all the work then.
Oh, really?
Um, okay, well, I'll make a motion that we make Rich LaCamera the Chair.
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? I, the only thing I'd like to say is, as the Chair, I was always very gracious with the agenda and in the past, I wasn't treated so nicely. So, it would just be my, you know, my hope that as a Chair, that all items that of the other Selectmen would suggest to be on the agenda, you know, be considered. So, I wasn't treated very nicely at one point and I, you know, that, that isn't productive for anything. So, also, I'd like to go over a couple of the policies too, for the Selectmen. So, that's all, you know, alright. So anyways, so, all those in favor, the only thing I-
Madam Chair?
Yep.
If I may, I was just gonna say, I've been watching you guys for a long time and I think you two have had a pretty good flow going with you as the Chairwoman and I think you have, you know, both had a lot of great items on the agenda. So, I would second what you said is I hope we all have an equal opportunity to get items on the agenda as we move forward. But, you know, I just want to say, I hope you guys keep the same chemistry that you've had, kind of a healthy conversation going back and I hope that I can add to it.
Rich, anything for you?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, so, all those in favor of making Selectman LaCamera Chairman?
LaCamera, I.
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
Alright, so, Rich, you're the Chairman. Before I turn the rest over to you, hold on. Just in taking a piece of housekeeping idea that Tracy said yesterday or the other day when we were working with the Finance Committee, because we are still doing things virtually now that there's the three of us, maybe we should just have a, an order that we vote in. I don't know, that's just something to think about. So, alright, I'm gonna turn the rest of the meeting over to you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to make Lillian Fabian the Vice Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. So, the next one, we, the Director of Veterans Services, Tracy, do we have to appoint somebody for that now, or?
We, we do. This is a reorg position.
Okay. Is there anybody on the board that wants to be the Director of Veterans Services?
Um, I don't, I can take that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't mind taking that one.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we appoint Lillian Fabian, the Director of Veterans Services.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, we need a representative from the Plymouth County Advisory Board and Lillian currently is our representative and I believe you want to stay on that, don't you?
Yeah, I'd really like to stay on that. I love the Plymouth County stuff.
Okay, good for you. So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Lillian Fabian, the Representative of the Plymouth County Advisory Board.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, we need a parking clerk, which really doesn't do too much. It only, it only happens when you're, when somebody's contesting a parking ticket and quite frankly, we don't have a lot of parking tickets here in Lakeville.
So honestly, I've been the parking clerk. I haven't done one thing. So, I mean, if I want to stay on, that's fine. Brian, if you want to take it-
I mean, if you'd like me to relieve you of that burden, I would be happy to.
Okay, I nominate Brian Day for parking clerk.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I, Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, there's a few other point persons that we, I guess the board has been designated for some period of time. The first one has to do with the budget for fiscal '21. I'm currently the liaison to do that. So, I guess I would like to continue doing that for now.
I'll make a motion to nominate Rich LaCamera back to the budget FY21 person.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
That's alright, we're gonna, that's gonna happen, Brian. Okay, the next one is the School Department Liaison. Leah's currently that representative.
Yeah, that's another one that we really, it's more like a social, you know, not so much budget related, but I haven't really done anything there. I don't mind staying on in case something comes up, but it's up to, you know.
I mean, Leah, do you have a strong desire between school or parks?
Um. Park is more work. I'll take, I'll take park if you want school, Brian. I'm just worried about your schedule, that's all.
That's what I was gonna ask, if there was, if there was one or the other that has more traditional business hour interactions, I was gonna ask, so.
Yeah, that would probably be school if something, if, and you know what, you may be able to develop that too. It's just with only having two people on the board for almost, you know, whatever, 10 months and, you know, so, so I'll nominate Brian Day for the School Department Liaison.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. And the Park Commission Liaison?
I'll take that one again if anyone-
Okay, you want to make that motion, Brian?
Sure, I'll make the motion to re-nominate Leah to Park Department Liaison.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. Union negotiations, I have currently been the representative for the union negotiations and-
Yep.
Going on, so I will continue to do that.
Yep, I'll nominate Rich for union negotiations.
And I will second that.
Any discussion?
I just, it'll be another whatever amount of time, so I think that'll be a good time for learning on that position for any us other folks, so.
All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. The last meeting is the Staff Meeting Liaison, which is Leah currently. And Brian, just so you know what this is about, is that, and actually, Leah and I have been rotating on a, on a basis of, you know, sometimes she can't attend the Department Ed meeting and I attended or vice versa. And the Department Ed meetings are usually during the day. But, we try to do it on a rotating basis, just because she's the liaison, doesn't mean you can't say, "I want to do it this week." Okay?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd love an opportunity to develop some of those relationships every now and then.
Okay, so you still want to be the liaison, Lillian?
Um, it, you know, Rich, it doesn't matter. It's traditionally been a Chair thing, but, you know, worst case-
I mean, I'll do it if you want, it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't mind taking a couple, you know, when you, when you can't be there. That's, you know, that's fine by me. And again, Brian, like, a couple of weeks ago, when we had some updates from police and fire, if all three of us want to be there, we only have to, we just have to post it like a meeting. So, no one says, "We can't all be there." It's just, we're all, or two of us, a quorum is gonna be there, we just have to post it as a meeting, which, you know, just have to let Maureen or Tracy, not Maureen, know ahead of time so that they can do that. But, so, Rich, I'll nominate you for the Staff Meeting Liaison. Unless you don't want it.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
You want to second that, Brian?
Yep, I will second the motion.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, so that's it for now. So, all these other, other, there is other appointments that we do, but they, they won't be done until the end of July. So, and Tracy, I'm sure will remind us what needs to be done.
Yep.
Okay, next item on the agenda is announcements. The town will be holding their annual special town meeting on June 23rd, 2020 at the Productive High School. This year, the annual town meeting will come first, beginning at seven o'clock, followed by the special time meeting at eight o'clock. So, the next announcement is that we have received a letter from the COA, COA Director about Bruce Baptiste, the Bruce, the Friends Library are running an ongoing fundraising brick campaign, offering residents the opportunity to have bricks engraved and added to the walkway and the rear of the COA overlooking Loon Pond. The first round of bricks arrived and, and Bruce installed them the week of June 12th with the help of the Friends of Presidents, Lea, Linda, Ewell and Joanne Bowles. We are grateful for this volunteer service and is a beautiful addition, you know, to our center. So, we'd like to thank them for their work and you can see the walkway, it looks fantastic.
A lot of work and it's really appreciated for people to-
Yep.
Take their time and help that, help out the town.
So, that's good. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to-
Can I add an announcement? I don't know if you have. I just, I, when I saw Maureen today, we were just talking about how smoothly the election ran yesterday. I mean, I don't know if you want to, we, I, we have the names, Maureen has the names. I just, I'll start with Lillian and just say, you know, she did a great job. Unofficial results were posted at 11:58 PM last night, so even after the election had finished, she was still working hard. And then by 4:38 today, she had the official results posted. I have them printed, Rich, if, you know, anyone wants any kind of, who won. But, Maureen, I don't know if you want to just thank the other folks that were key in making yesterday happen.
Yes, absolutely. So, in addition to Lillian and Jessie, who always do a fantastic job and made the elections as safe and sound as possible and go as quickly as possible, even with the massive influx of people that we had coming in, we also had additional help from the poll workers and from Captain Sean Joyce, who did an amazing job helping out. We had our facilities people, we had Teddy De La Rocco, we had Blake, we had Justin Pike, and then we had Gage Ramsden, Nick Hubert and Nolan O'Brien from the Fire Department. Just an absolute group effort of people coming together to make sure our elections were safe for the people of Lakeville to attend and were not too cumbersome for people to get through. And I was very impressed with everything everyone did yesterday and I just wanted to thank them. And I know Leah, you, you and I had talked about it at length, just what an amazing job they did and wanted to thank them for, for going out of their way and doing it even better than they had to. Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Um, Maureen, could you repeat? I got Gage Ramsden, Nolan O'Brien and who was the third? Nick Hubert. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, just to extend on to what Slukman and Fabian said there, the turnout itself was still massive. So, even though they had to cut down on the number of booths and do everything that they had, I was still very impressed at how many people showed up in person even, knowing with everything going on and still how smooth everything went. So, definitely a tip of the hat to everybody that took something, it was part of that effort.
I concur. I think they did a great job and, you know, people don't realize what it takes to do all this planning, especially under COVID-19 and everything that they had to do from cleaning to the protective devices, you know, for all the poll workers and, and the residents, you know, as well. It was just very, very well organized. We need to thank them for that. Okay, moving on to item number four is to vote to fund CARES Act COVID-19 related purchases for the regional school district. And I know that we have Ashley here, the Finance Director of the region, and maybe you can tell us about the request, Ashley, please.
Sure, the request is for, I've gone to both Freetown and Lakeville. It is to help us purchase additional Chromebooks for distance learning. We have two phases. Right now, we're requesting the initial phase. That's approximately 352 student devices and that is to replace the aging devices we have currently that will no longer be able to use after June 30th. And in addition to that, 250 teacher Chromebooks. As we were doing our remote learning this year, we realized that some of the teachers' Chromebooks are aging out where they can't support some of our online resources that we have. So, this purchase will allow us to have a new set so the teachers can use those resources and be able to teach the students if we are in a remote learning situation come the fall. Right now, the state hasn't provided us, provided us the details on what that looks like yet. They've been coming up with a few examples, but we just don't know yet. So, this initial phase will make us level service. So, all those kids that are using the Chromebooks right now at home will be able to do that in the fall.
Okay. And just, just to note that the, this will be reimbursed by the CARES Act and our share will come from the Plymouth County CARES Act funding, funding and Freetown share will come from the state. So, this is not a cost to the town and this is something they need, you know, to go forward to do this remote learning. So, I believe we need to make a motion to request the Plymouth County CARES fund and the amount of-
Rich, can I interrupt really quickly?
Sure.
Um, there was two possible scenarios. One, one of them is being funded in FY21 and the other is being funded in FY20. We have Ashley explain the difference on those.
Sure.
Sure, so that's really just the timing of the purchase. The two allocations are one based off the FY20 assessment sheet and the other is based off the FY21 assessment sheet. So, if you look on here, the FY21 assessment breakout, it's just a slightly more, it's 106,000 instead of 105, but that's solely due to timing. And I believe the purchase needs to be in hand for Lakeville for the reimbursement. So, considering it's already June 17th, we might roll over into FY21 when we receive the goods.
Okay. Okay, so, so then should we vote not to exceed 106,143 then? No?
That sounds good because that will cover them because like Ashley said, the CARES documentation, it needs to be in hand and not just a purchase order. So, if we do that, we will cover all eventualities if it gets in this year or if it gets pushed through next year, which is most likely.
Okay, well, then I, I can, I can make the motion that we don't exceed $106,143.63 in the motion.
Okay, so, to request the reimbursement for Plymouth County CARES fund in the amount of 106,143.63 and I, we probably should say, Ashley, I think, of fiscal '21-
Yeah.
COVID-19 purchases made by the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. So, is that your motion, Leah?
Yeah, I'll second, well, you can make it, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
One point of discussion, if I may. Going, going forward, Ashley, and if you don't have the answer right now, that's fine, just really a point of curiosity. The, I assume the students are issued a Chromebook, perhaps entering a certain grade and then they use that same one for a period of years. Are the teachers' Chromebooks, is a certain percentage of them gonna be rolled out each year so we don't have a large number kind of expiring at the same time? I mean, this might have just been a weird timing issue with COVID, but I'm just curious what the plan is moving forward.
So, it's truly a COVID issue. In our, in our technology plan, we had a phase in program going. So, we don't have a one-to-one program currently in the district and that's really our phase two if we really go that route. All of our Chromebooks are really in the schools, they don't go home with students, but because of COVID, we've had a little less than 400 Chromebooks go out to students throughout since March.
So, that higher number, the second round, would get them to the one-to-one?
Exactly.
Got it, alright. Thank you for explaining.
I have a question too, Ashley. Who is going to be like the troubleshooter slash maintenance? So, if these Chromebooks go out to families and they have a problem, I mean, who are they, you know, if it's your own laptop at home that your child is using, you'll say, "Oh, this is my laptop, I need to figure it out." But, you know, do we-
So, currently, our tech department's been doing that. We have on staff Craig, who is our director, and then he has, I believe, four or, I think it's four people, five people on staff who can troubleshoot. And again, we don't have one-to-one devices out there. So, this is really status quo. There's no change in quantity from current year to next year. So, it'll be the same setup that we've had. If we do roll into phase two and do a one-to-one program, that's a broader conversation that we're gonna have to have.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor?
Fabian, I.
Day, I.
LaCamera, I. Okay, thanks, Ashley.
Thank you, Ash.
Thank you.
Okay, see ya. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is schedule the Board of Selectmen's meetings for the remainder of June, July and August. Since I, I just got this today, I haven't had a chance to look at the dates, to be honest with you. But, I mean, if you want to approve it the way it is, that's okay. And we could always, we could always modify them if we have to.
Um.
And quickly to see if there's anything that stands out.
Yeah.
I mean, we can do this next Monday if we want, because we are having a meeting next Monday night.
My, my only request, which I know is not probably gonna be liked by everybody, is if we could move the meetings back kind of to five o'clock or later. The three o'clock that have been happening would be very difficult for myself.
We were expecting to do that, Brian.
Alright, I appreciate that.
Um, I, I guess it kind of depends on how much, you know, the summer seems to be a little bit, I know we still have a lot going on. Would be nice if we could get a week off somewhere in the summer, but I'm okay with the way it is right now.
So, do you want to schedule, we're gonna have a meeting next Monday night, the 22nd?
Yep.
Do you want to schedule July 6th and then decide next week what we want to do with the rest of the schedule? Or we can schedule them all and if we have to move them, we can move them.
Yeah, you know what, I, I would be happy doing July 6th and July 20th and then just seeing how much work plays out and after that and where we're at with, because we're doing it every week and I don't know if we're gonna keep doing, how long we're gonna keep doing that. So, um, we do July 6th, I mean, that would be, but I know Tracy likes to plan, so it doesn't matter to me.
The only, Mr. Chair, the only date that I'd like to stick to, I would hate to do the August 10th because I'm gonna be taking a few days off the week prior. So, I wouldn't be able to really get a agenda prepped. So, I just want to stay away from- Um, so I just want to stay away from August tenth. Everything else is pretty much open.
Okay.
And I, I think I'm fine with the July dates right now, too, if we only want to do some of them for now.
Okay, so why don't we, uh, schedule the meetings for June twenty-second, July sixth, and July twentieth for now?
Okay.
Are you all set?
Yep, sounds good.
Then we'll revisit it. Okay. Thank you. Okay, um.
Can I, can I just jump in? We do have a chat. I don't know if you can see it, Rich. I don't know who can see it. Um, from Nora Klein, that she says, "I agree. Great job with the election," so, again, um.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I see it now. Thank you.
Yep.
Yep, okay, great. Okay, uh, does anybody have any new business? Well, sir? Lillian, all set?
I'm all set.
Maureen, anything?
Nothing new.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's a lie. I have tons. I just don't want to talk about it.
Okay, next thing is the update on the former Lakeville Hospital property. Um, the, uh, the developer that's, uh, purchasing the property, uh, wants to present the project to the Board of Selectmen on, uh, June twenty-second, next Monday night, at, uh, seven o'clock, so, um, um, that's one of the reasons why we're having a meeting. Uh, uh, because then after that, it gets complicated with the dates. Um, so, um, we will go ahead, you know, with that, and I'm sure there's some other things, uh, Maureen, we have to include on that agenda too, right?
Yep, Tracy has all this going.
What time was that going to be, Monday?
The, uh, the presentation is going to be seven o'clock.
Okay.
So, is this going to be the first thing on the agenda, or do you guys want to go earlier and do the other things?
Um, we can do the other things at six thirty, if that's okay with Brian?
Should be, just, no? Yep, that looks good.
Six thirty, okay with you? Okay, so we could do whatever else we have earlier. Um, I don't know what we got right now, Tracy and Maureen, but, um,
You think.
We.
So, um, you should be able to get it all done in a half an hour, definitely.
Okay, um, I also would like to, uh, give an invitation to the, uh, the Planning Board, uh, to attend this meeting too, so they can be part of the, the overview, um, as well.
Um, the only thing, Mr. Chair, is I have not heard back from Lake Cam yet.
You're freezing.
Okay, hello. I have not heard back from Lake Cam yet, um, to see if they're going to be available to take the meeting. Um, so I'm just waiting on that.
Oh, I think Rich is frozen.
Rich is freezing. We lost him.
You know when you'll know, Tracy?
I emailed him today, um, so I would assume he would get back to me tomorrow. Penny. So, you know, that's the only thing, if, if, you know, they're not available at that time, then we might have to shuffle some stuff around.
Okay.
Uh, worst comes to worst, I can, uh, I can. As long as it's available, I can post it and put it out on Fa- Facebook. Jose has given me, uh, the ability to do that, so as long as it's free from another meeting, which I didn't see on the calendar, but then again, I didn't look today, so. Um, but shouldn't be a problem.
Look on the actual calendar for the town.
Yeah, it's already booked.
Uh, let's see, that's what.
Twenty-second, yeah.
Nothing on the twenty-second.
In fact, we're not showing there either.
Yeah.
Fine.
Okay, so is Rich trying to call in again, do you think, or did we lose him?
Um, well, he's going to try again, because he's off completely now.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect timing. I had to let the dog in anyway. He wouldn't know his songs.
Craig says he's not in the waiting room yet, so.
Isn't it nice, though, that you have two selectmen years? Do you still have a quorum?
Yep. It is very nice, actually. Well, that's why even looking at the summer dates, I mean, you know.
Right.
Well, we did pass the remote thing, you know, so.
Right.
And now we know that it works. That was my biggest thing, was, you know, whether it works, so.
Harry.
It's coming in.
Okay, he's coming in. There you are.
Also, I have an update from Jose. We can cover that meeting Monday night.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't know what happened. I hope it was me or what.
It wasn't.
I didn't know what you said.
So, um, Tracy had said that we weren't sure if Jose could cover the meeting, but Jose just, uh, reached out to Craig and told him that, or to Kevin, Kevin, right, and told him that they can cover the meeting on Monday night, and there's no other meetings going on, so.
Okay.
Right, that was it, right on that, ladies?
So, six thirty on the twenty-second.
Okay, um, was there any other questions on that, uh, discussion about the Lakeville property, Lakeville Hospital property, or all set? Okay.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, the next thing is the, an update on the Lakeville Country Club. We don't have an update on that, uh, right now. So, um, as soon as we do, we'll provide any information that we have. Okay, is there any other business that, uh, may probably come before this meeting for the board?
Um, I just, this, I mean, I can talk to Tracy tomorrow, but Tracy, I am available to help you prep for the meeting, so just know what you need.
Did you, uh, Tracy, you got everything now that you need?
Um, I'm still waiting on the motions and the budget.
Okay, well, the budget you'll have tomorrow morning, yeah.
Okay.
I know, I know, you got it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, uh, there's not, no, nothing else, uh, for the meeting? Um, that, uh, I'm going to make a motion to give an executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, uh, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining, specifically that the Police Union, Fires Unions, uh, Labor's Union, and if the open meeting has a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, and the chair so declares pursuant, um, to Mass General Laws, thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, three, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation, if the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the board and the chair so displays. And we will not be coming back into regular sessions.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
AB and I.
Day, aye.
Uh, LaCamer, aye. Okay, so we're all set, and I know that you have.